The committee will be holding a hearing on three different bills today, starting with 22-0242 is a charter amendment for accounts payable at the request of former Councilman Bill Henry, who despite being the comptroller, still, I guess, still has legislative authority to put in bills, and so we're going to indulge him today. One note is that the Finance Director, Henry Raymond, was here. He informed me that his father had just passed away, and so I had asked him not to stay for the hearing. Despite him being willing to be here for the hearing, he had an amendment that it's, my understanding, is okay with the comptroller's office and the mayor's office, and so we're gonna, we're gonna move that amendment today. But just so everybody notes, he was interested in staying, and I told him that that was not going to be necessary. And so, I want to announce my...
(inaudible).
No, you go ahead. I will introduce my colleagues who are here today. Councilman Costello, Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Conway, Councilman Torrance, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Burnett. And so, I will call, turn the floor over to comptroller Bill Henry.
I don't want to take up any more of the body's time than I need to. We stand by the report that's been submitted, and we appreciate the cooperation of the administration, not just to the Department of Finance, but also the Department of Law in helping to draft this charter amendment, and the mayor's office for supporting the idea of moving this small section of what is currently the Finance Department back to the comptroller's office, so that we can focus on helping to fix the difficulties that the city has had in paying vendors for a number of years. And I'm here to answer questions if anybody on the committee has questions, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. First up, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Comptroller, I want to thank you for your leadership and for stepping forward on this issue. I do want to be perfectly candid with you. There was a significant deal of frustration with the administration, this budget cycle, regarding procurement and the challenges around it. Outstanding accounts payable just yesterday. I believe I sent to the director and deputy director invoices for a local catering company that were in the neighborhood of 100 to 125 invoices that have not been paid since last year. So I'm very hopeful that if there's anyone in city government that can help move the needle on this issue, it's you. But I also want to be very candid on what the expectations are, and that the current baseline is entirely unacceptable, and we need to make significant progress on this issue again. If there's, I don't believe there's someone more capable of stretching that out and making the most progress possible. So, that's all. Thank you for hearing me, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. If I could just say quickly in response, we are starting from the perspective that the status quo is not what we're going to base our progress against, but we're going to be basing our progress against the goal. And the goal is to pay our invoices in a timely fashion.
Council Vice President Middleton?
Just a statement. I also agree with my colleague, and I'm sure all of my colleagues will agree, that we, from time to time, get calls and emails from constituents, businesses, women and minority businesses that really need their money. A lot of these businesses have been living paycheck to paycheck, and appreciate you taking this step to help cure this procurement issue. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? No. Okay, so first I'm going to introduce the amendment on behalf of the Finance Department. We just handed that out, so all of you should have it in front of you. Basically, going from accounts payable matters of procurement related to accounts payable should be managed by the Department of Accounts Payable in accordance with Article V-13, Department of Accounts Payable, General Powers and Duties, to switching it to accounts payable matters of payments and disbursements related to procurements shall be managed by the Department of Accounts Payable in accordance with Article V-13, Department of Accounts Payable, General Powers and Duties. It's really just, just, I mean, you want to talk on it, or it's pretty, it's just a pretty simple adjustment to clarify?
Yeah, I'm happy to explain. There was concern, this was original, this language was put in to make it clear that even though the Department of Finance will continue to be responsible for the procurement process, that paying people is technically part of the procurement process. So this was put in to make it clear that the paying part would now be done by accounts payable, and the rest would still be done by finance. The amendment is being added to make it clear that this does not mean accounts payable doesn't have to follow the procurement process. Where, and there was some concern about that, and so that's the purpose of this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I would, I would like to make a motion to accept this amendment. Seconded, motion by Schleifer, seconded by Conway. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to move Bill 22-0242 charter amendment accounts payable. Favorable?
With amendments.
With amendments. Moved by Torrance, seconded by Conway. We'll do a roll call vote.
(inaudible) by Ramos. Favorable, with amendments. Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yeah.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there's seven votes, any affirmative, no negatives, we can go to second read at the next regular meeting.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Comptroller, now that you have a lot of past due bills to pay, you can go back to work.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we'll hear Bill EA 22-0122. Amy McLean, member of Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission. If you can come up to the microphone and tell us who you are and why you are interested in serving on this commission.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Amy McLean. I am an attorney at the law firm of Ballard Spar. I am interested in serving on the commission. I've been doing affordable housing my entire career. Went to law school with the interest of doing child advocacy work and pivoted to community development because of the role at that place and providing good places for young people to grow. In my capacity, I represent housing authorities and affordable housing developers in transactions across the country, including some here in the city. I've been a city resident since 1998, and I'm proud to be part of the city, want to make a contribution back, and being on the commission is one way to do that.
Okay, are you currently on the commission?
I am not.
You're not, okay. Are you, have you, are you familiar with the issues that are before the commission currently, or?
Yes.
Okay, so is there any, anything specific that you are very interested in working on as a member of the commission?
I think I would most likely want to become more acclimated with the sort of tenor of the contributions and the insights that are being provided. I know that the commission provides an advisory role, so assisting in that way.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Any question? Councilwoman Ramos?
Yeah.
Oh, you wanted it on also? Okay. We'll turn it on.
There you go.
Ramos and then Costello.
Thank you. Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for your willingness to serve. Can you explain a little bit about those, specifically what you've been doing in affordable housing currently? Is it being, working on the legal side, with making the transactions work, what specifically?
Yep. So, I represent housing authorities and developers that are putting together transactions to rehabilitate and maintain affordable housing, or to develop new housing. And I assist in negotiating transactions with investors and lenders, coordinating issues with HUD, with state and local governments, depending on the funding sources, because these transactions require a lot of different funding sources, and so you have to figure out how to integrate all of that. So I do a lot of negotiation among those parties, and supporting the clients and implementing their vision for what they're trying to do with that, the particular community.
So you've been representing the developers like Penrose, or some of the other folks that have been doing loans and housing tax codes?
I represent developers and housing authorities who act as developers.
Okay, all right, yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to commend Mayor Scott for this appointment. I don't know anyone who's more qualified for this position than Ms. McLean. I've known her for a number of years, resident in the 11th District, and am familiar with her professional work, as well as her, I guess beyond professional, but the work you do nationally in this issue. So, I look forward to enthusiastically supporting this appointment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Councilman Costello, would you like to make a motion?
Motion to move the appointment.
Seconded.
Moved by Costello, seconded by Ramos. We'll do a roll call.
(inaudible). Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there's seven votes, any affirmative, no negatives, we can go to second read at the next regular meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. McLean, and we look forward to having you on the commission.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now moving on to the last, but certainly not least, bill, CC 22-0234, Ordinance, Police Accountability. And I will turn the floor over first to Councilman Conway to just tell us where we are. This is the third hearing that we've had on this topic. There's been a lot of work that goes into it, so I thank Councilman Conway for his work on this important topic, and if you can just give us an update of where we are, and then we will dive right in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and really want to thank city agencies, the advocates, for continued communication back and forth on this bill. This is not an easy bill to pull together, and certainly not in a short amount of time. We have made some pretty substantial changes to the bill, or at least we're proposing so, many of which are pretty straightforward, some of which are not. And I think, you know, we heard pretty loud and clear some of the, some of the requests and demands of advocates, but also some of the considerations with regard to charter amendments and so on and so forth that would be required to meet some of those things. There is still work to be done on this bill, but I think we are ready to move the bill today. And with that, look forward to talking through the amendments and jumping into it. Mr. Chair, do you want me to start going through amendments now, or?
Sure.
All right, we'll do that. So everyone should have received the amendments in their inboxes this morning. There are still a few pieces that are floating out there that we need to change, based on conversations just before this hearing, but by and large, I think we're in a really good place. Basically, actually, I'll just go one by one. So Amendment 1, if folks have it pulled up, strikes on page two, lines 27 in its entirety, and on that same page, in lines 28 and 29, strikes four and five respectively, and substitutes three and four. This will remove some of the no longer functional police entities within the city. This bill won't be relevant to them because they no longer exist. Amendment 2 just clearly defines the meaning of public safety officer in the city. Amendment number 3, on page 3, strikes lines 18 through 20 in their entities on that same page, in line 21, strikes M and substitutes for L. Amendment number 4, on page 3, after line 27, it serves in general, and on the same page, in line 28, it strikes lines, it strikes 13 and substitutes 17 on that same page, strikes the beginning appointed, so on and so forth. What this amendment does is effectively changes the way that we make up the board. The board will be a 17-member board, as opposed to a 13-member board. It's designed such that each council member will be able to recommend someone to the Police Accountability Board, and then the mayor would then have the opportunity to nominate that person formally. This is something that we kind of elegantly figured out with the work of the Law Department to make sure that we didn't have to do a charter amendment to make this happen. If the mayor rejects a recommendation of a council member, he'll have to do so in writing with an explanation. So I think this is an elegant solution to some of the issues that we've been having without resulting, resorting to a charter amendment. So it's a 17-member board. The mayor has two picks. Each council member and the council president will have a single pick. One of the mayor's picks has to be a youth member. Amendment number 5, on page 4, in line 12, it strikes the colon, and on the same page, strikes the 1, and on the same page, same line, strikes a semicolon, and substitute a period, blah, blah, blah. I think those are just kind of cleaning up. On page 4, line 19, after becomes, insert a police officer or, on the same page, and strike the beginning with "the" on line 19, through and including "education" in line 22, and substitute "a law enforcement agency" on the same page, strike lines 25 and 26 in their entities, and substitute for "is, is or becomes a person required to file a financial disclosure statement as required under Article, Article 8, Section 7-7, elected officials and staff, 7-8, agency officials and staff, so on and so forth." What this does is it, it limits the folks who can serve on the board to people who are not political appointees. What we don't want to happen is, is for any of the elected officials, or especially the mayor, to appoint folks from the mayor's office, or from within our own internal teams to represent citizens on the board. So this is an elegant way to do that. Those that already have to fill out a financial disclosure would not be eligible for this board. Amendment number 7 is broken out into two amendments, and we're going to separate this out once we get to a vote on the amendments. On page 4, after line 26, so there's a 7A and a 7B. 7A says on page 4, after line 26, it, under prohibitions, it says, "No former police officers or employees of a law enforcement agency may serve on the board." So this excludes former officers from the board completely. So, the chair just asked whether or not that was going to be included in the packet. So the, the way the bill is amended right now, it's amended to completely block out all former officers, and then there's a section that allows either for no restriction on officers as a separate amendment, or to allow for a restriction of two former officers. And I've had a lot of conversations back and forth with my colleagues and with advocates on this issue. This is probably one of the most contentious issues in the bill at the moment, and I'll advocate to my colleagues, and I've talked to folks just before this hearing, that we sort of strike a balance here and create a limitation of no more than two former police officers serving on the board going forward. The logic here for me is that former officers are residents just like every single one of us, and I think, having retired, depending on how far out you are, I think you can have an unbiased look back at infractions that officers may commit in the line of duty. So I think there can be a balance struck here. The limitation of two, though, I think is really important, because I think there's a point at which if we have too many former officers on the board, it completely eliminates the purpose of the board. So I think of those two amendments, I'm going to advocate for my colleagues that we support the second, which would limit it, limit it to two former officers, no more than two former officers serving on the board. Amendment number 8, this...
I have a question about that.
Please.
So, that doesn't necessarily mean that there have to be members on the board, it's just if they are nominated through our nominating process, and they happen to be officers, that, for instance, the entire council can't nominate officers, basically.
That's right.
But it may not be that officers even are nominated. We're saying that if they are nominated, there can only be a cap of two.
That's exactly right.
So, it's entirely possible there would be none.
That's exactly right.
Just wanted to clarify, thanks.
And so, I think what would happen here is if we have three council members to put forward former officers as their pick for the board, this would be an instance in which the mayor would say, "We can't do that." And the mayor would have to choose one to reject. Any other questions on that piece? I think that piece is very important.
Good morning, Nikki Thompson for Council President Mosby. I just want to ask for clarification.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Is this better?
Yes.
Nikki Thompson for Council President Mosby. Can we do a little bit more analysis, maybe have some more conversation on 7A versus 7B? Because I get the point, and I appreciate you, Councilmember Ramos, for asking that clarifying question, but I would like for us to have just a little bit more discussion on the difference between a complete bar from having former officers versus the cap, and how we came to that conclusion, if possible.
Sure. So, there was a lot of different, different groups of people that the original bill and the original conversations was set to either include or exclude. And so, in going through and trying to create a fair and balanced bill, when you have, you know, on a topic this important, you have a different, you want a diverse group because it brings different sets of experiences and thoughts on the topic. And so when you have people who are on two sides of an issue, if you have, if you exclude only, if you exclude one side of the conversation altogether, then you're leaving out an important part of that. And what I've seen is that many times you have former officers, or even current officers, who bring to light issues that are going on with other officers. We've seen some pretty high-profile cases of officer misconduct that was only brought to light because of their peers and others who exposed that issue. They're the ones on the ground, they can see it. And so, excluding officers but including everybody else didn't, didn't seem like a fair balance. Now, the state law prohibits current officers, and I think we all agree that that makes sense, based on the nature of what the bill is. But this amendment here is to strike a balance and provide the ability, or lack of, not ability, but just not the exclusion, to exclude one, one part of the conversation. And keep in mind, each one of these things, there's, I don't know of any other board or commission in the city that has, I guess, such an ability for diverse makeup, but the fact that you have each council member across the entire city selecting a member. I think that that's a great standard to set, actually. I wish every board and commission was formed the way that Chairman Conway has formed this one. And so, you know, I don't, I don't see this becoming an issue anyways, but I think that giving the council members the ability to appoint somebody, it's not even that they make that final decision, it then goes to the mayor. So, the mayor, right now, essentially has the full authority to appoint people to all the commissions. Some of them, the council president also gets to make an appointment, but the mayor still essentially retains that ability. So if the mayor does not want any, you know, any group, or any, you know, former officers, or any, really, any, anything, he has the ability to, to strike down that nominee. So what we're saying here is like, let's not tie the hands of the current mayor or any future mayors by leaving out an integral voice in the conversation.
Thank you, Chair Schleifer. Just another question, if I may. Have any, and you touched on it, and so my apologies if I missed it, sorry to ask another question. But have other jurisdictions included caps like this that are currently discussing this issue? I know some of our neighboring counties have gone through the PAB process, or started this process.
Can you repeat the question?
Have any of our other neighboring jurisdictions that have either started this PAB process or currently going through the process, do they have similar caps? And also, if, I know we'll have another, we'll have opportunity for public testimony, but I know that one of the main concerns of advocate groups was to ensure that the integrity of this PAB was preserved by not having former officers. Have they been consulted on this amendment, and if so, are they going to provide?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the beginning of that? Who?
Yeah.
The other jurisdictions that have already passed this, have they set a, have they capped the amount of police, former officers that can serve?
Not to my knowledge. So, as I understand it now, there are other renditions of this that allow officers already, and there are no caps in those instances. I don't know if there are instances of caps.
Okay.
I do know that is our proposed solution to a concern of potentially having a scenario in which you could have a critical mass of former officers serving on the board. That said, I think this would be highly unlikely, certainly in the near term, but let's say over into the future, 20, 30 years from now. Let's say we just have a sort of pro-former officer-friendly council, and we just want to pack it. This would prevent that from happening, because I think the intention is to have a balanced board that is really thinking about solutions to police accountability and public safety. One, balancing the ability for officers to do their job, but also respecting the relationship with the communities that they are overseeing and policing. So I think there's a lot to be gained, I would say, regardless of having someone who's actually done the job speak about what that looks like, because the Police Accountability Board, although it doesn't have direct ability, except in the case of the chair and maybe two members, to be appointed to the ACC to oversee individual cases, the Police Accountability Board will be, in many ways, a policy body to think about how, how we want to solve some of these issues going into the future. And when we're thinking about that, I think it would be a mistake in some ways to not have a former officer speak to that. I think also, from a perspective, and, you know, in conversations with my colleagues, I think, one of the concerns that I heard and I appreciate is just a matter of being consistent in our approach to, to this work, and there's a balance, I don't think you can be all the way consistent and just allow willy-nilly former officers to sort of take over the board. We definitely don't want that, because I think that would then compromise the integrity of the board. But being consistent in the opportunity, I think, for folks to serve on the board and to suggest... and to suggest that someone who is a resident, taxpaying resident of Baltimore City, is ineligible for this board simply because of their former profession. I'm not sure that that quite strikes the balance that I think is most helpful. Although I do appreciate that if you do have a critical mass, like, let's say we just had a critical mass of, like, some other perspective on the board, I don't think that would be helpful either. And so I think the two-member cap for former officers is probably the most eloquent way to address that concern.
Thank you. And then my last question is, how did we come up with the two-member cap? Was there any particular, since there was no jurisdiction that we got it from, was there any particular analysis there?
Sure. That was based on conversations with an advocate, understanding that there were concerns from conversations with folks on the committee. And it was a suggestion based on that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilmember Burnett.
So the current makeup of the civilian review board, I guess, could be interpreted as allowing for former law enforcement officers to serve. However, one of the things that I do think is particularly helpful and should be of consideration is that the voting members or non-voting member advisory board model, which does have representation from the, designated from the Baltimore City Police Commissioner, NAACP, FOP, ACLU, Vanguard, has there been consideration to having those with that law enforcement background serving in advisory role instead of a voting role?
I think it's important to understand what the PAB actually does. The PAB, its primary responsibility is to receive complaints and then to fill the ACC. There will be three members from the PAB that will serve on the ACC, but it's really the ACC that will be directly overseeing complaints against officers, not the PAB. The PAB, as I mentioned before, is responsible for holding regular meetings with police chiefs in the city. And more so being, I think, like, the regular work of the PAB is sort of being like a policy body to think about how our police entities and the city can address some of the behavioral concerns that officers bring up. And if they see trends, think about what changes need to be made to address those trends. So I think having an advisory body here doesn't, I don't think that really helps all that much. It has, we didn't really consider it that way. I think, you know, we considered advisory body for, or like advisory, non-voting capacity, I think, for young people, but I don't think it was pretty much necessary here. Where I think it will be important is with regard to the ACC, we certainly don't want, like, a critical mass of the ACC consisting of officers. But I think, once again, it's important to go back to, I think, the clarification question that Councilwoman Ramos asked. How likely is it to even have a single officer on the board is dependent on, I think, the council members and who they feel is best poised to represent their district. Putting this cap, I think, prevents too many council members from finding that as their solution, but it is very possible that we won't have any, so.
Thank you.
Shall I go? All right, I will go on. We are on, oh, no, I see, I'm looking at the wrong sheet, sorry. We're in amendment number eight. And so on page four, line 29, "Strike the mayor shall appoint the chair of the board and substitute with the chair shall be elected." I won't read all that, but essentially, the original draft of the bill allowed the mayor to select the board chair. We just changed that to make it an elected board chair by the board. Amendment number nine, on page five and line 21, "Strike violation of the law and substitute a conviction of a felony or crime relevant to a member's credibility for which the penalty and sentence has not been fully satisfied." And this would be an instance in which, I believe, let me find it in the actual bill. I believe this is a case where we would allow for removal of a member of the board. Yes, so that, those are the, one of the terms in which we could remove someone from the board. Amendment number 10, on page five, "Strike, sir, without compensation but and substitute shall only be entitled to such compensation as provided in the ordinance of estimates." This allows for the members of the board to be compensated as delineated in the ordinance of estimates, understanding that these positions may require a significant amount of time. Amendment number 11, on page six and line 12, "Strike superior government authority and substitute chief." And in the same page, on line 13, "Strike one or more and substitute each." And in the same page, same line, "Strike agencies and substitute agency." And on the same line in 20, "Strike complaint and substitute complaint." This is just some clarifying language to make sure that it all makes sense. Amendment number 12, on page six after line 23, it asserts in general. And on the same page in line 24, after must, insert publicly publish. And on the same page after line 31, require a board website. The board must maintain a public website where reports required under subsection A of this section are publicly published. So in this amendment, we require both, of course, publishing reports, but then even doing so on a website, realizing that having easy access for the public to see what's going on, understand the work of the Police Accountability Board is going to be important. And of course, the web is the way that we do a lot of things here, so. Amendment number 13, on page seven, "Strike lines three through five in their entities and substitute a complaint of police misconduct may be filed with the board or its designee or a law enforcement agency that employs a police officer who is subject, the subject of the complaint." And on the same page after line eight, insert, "If a complaint is filed with a law enforcement agency, the complaint must be forwarded to the board upon receipt." This amendment, it seeks to create the process by which the board receives complaints and then also requires that the board be notified by the department when the department receives complaints as well. We're going to hear a little bit from the department on this and some clarification on this, and we'll actually end up changing this probably in a second reader version. We'll talk about that a little bit later. And on the same page in line 11, strike or, and on the same page in line 12, strike the period, blah, 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 and insert, "Forwarded to the board by the board's designee as authorized," under 10-9 of this subtitle. Amendment number 14, on page nine and line 16, "Strike violation of law and substitute a conviction of a felony or crime relevant to a member's credibility for which the penalty and sentence has not been fully satisfied." Amendment number 15, on page nine and lines 22 and 25, after estimates, on each instance, insert or supplementary appropriation legislation. This, once again, just allows folks to be compensated. Amendment number 16, on page 10 and line 26, "Strike determine if and substitute make determinations that." And on the same page, strike, beginning with the comma, on line 27, down through and including charged, in line 30. Amendment number 17, on page 11 and line one, "Strike superior governmental authority and substitute chief." On amendment number 18, on page 11, "Strike lines 14 through 16 in their entities and substitute on completion of an investigation of a complaint of police misconduct involving a member of the public and a police officer, regardless of whether the complaint originated from within the law enforcement agency or from an external source, the law enforcement agency shall forward the committee, forward to the committee the investigatory files for the matter." And last but not least, amendment number 19, on page 13, strikes lines one through eight in their entities, and on the same page in line nine, strikes four and substitutes two, and on the same page after line 13, inserts section three, "And it be further ordained that the Baltimore City Office of Equity and Civil Rights shall temporarily serve as the board's designee as provided for in 10-9A of this ordinance." Complaints of police misconduct in general and accept complaints of police misconduct beginning July 1, 2022, and continuing into the board establishes a uniform procedure for filing complaints as required by 11-9C, complaints of police misconduct. This allows us to, on day one, begin working under this new system. So any questions? I know that was a whole lot. As you can tell, we've been working pretty tirelessly on this bill. I think most of this is pretty straightforward and clean-up. There are some things that I think were sticky pieces. I'll open the floor, Mr. Chair, if there are any other questions about the amendments we put forward.
I have a question.
Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you. Okay, I'll defer to Councilmember Torrance again.
What's that?
Chair Conway, oh, sorry. Councilmember Conway, Mr. Chair, the three of us have been consulting each other in terms of, like, the law enforcement officer membership. We're thinking if we can add language to the two members where there is no sustained misconduct charges against members in the public, in general public. That way, we ensure that if a officer is a member of the PAB, that they have no sustained misconduct charges against them or against a member of the public. Because we recognize that officers may have misconduct charges for uniform violations or not having a ready, all sorts of other things that may not be related to the public, but we just want to make sure that we split the baby down in the board with this one.
That was one of the things we considered, and I'm not sure if the Law Department can chip in here or if, Ben from DLR, I don't see Ben in the crowd, but it was one of the things that we considered and we were initially pushing forward, but I think there was some difficulty in defining that.
We were thinking about adding it under prohibitions on page five of the amendments under four as additional language.
I was not privy to those conversations. Lisa Walden is not here, I don't believe she might be the better person to answer that question unless Michelle has had discussions.
So I think we can, we can consider it for...
For a floor amendment, second reader?
We can consider it for the second reader, yeah. I think, because there was, we did have this conversation, and I think there was...
We found out a way that we might be able to add it under prohibitions.
Yeah, we can consider it for second reader.
Just for the public's perspective, we're adding it under prohibitions, so it doesn't impact returning citizens. So we're going to try to make it specific to the prohibitions for the two law enforcement persons. Oh, sorry. For the public's understanding, there is an amendment that would go under page five, which is the prohibitions, paragraph four, where it specifies that you former law enforcement officers or employees. What we wanted to add is language about no sustained allegations of misconduct against the general public. That way, it does not impact returning citizens being added to the board as well. So just want to make sure that it's clear for the public, understand what the prohibition would be, and it would be explicitly tied to former law enforcement.
Can you explain that last part again? You were saying that you don't want it to apply to returning citizens. Can you elaborate on that?
So we're making sure persons who are formerly incarcerated are not excluded from the board. So in here, we have the explicit prohibition for just law enforcement personnel. So we just want to make sure in their service that there is no sustained misconduct charges against the general public.
While they were on duty as a police officer.
Yes, correct.
Not related to if it was off-duty and they were involved in a situation, is that what you're saying?
Those can also come in. So that's why we're saying sustained against the general public, because that still applies to their general police powers as well, because they can be then suspended because of misconduct. So we're just, not trying to get deep into the legal weeds, but we're just making sure there's no sustained misconduct charges against them with the general public.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilor President.
If I may, Mr. Chair, to further on Councilmember Torrance's point, my only question is, and this may be what Chair Conway was referencing earlier, is sustained going to be a strong enough threshold, given just the number of charges that are ultimately filed against officers but are not sustained? Should we consider maybe broader language if we're trying to be as inclusive as possible? Because I agree with the points that you're trying to make, Councilmember.
So the other piece is that if we are bringing in and evaluating sustained, that means that we can look into their record as well, as an officer. So if there's something that is a pattern, I think if there's something that is substantially staying out as a pattern, if you have, there's a difference between having misconduct charges for your uniform multiple times in your entire career, and then there's a difference between having and looking at the explicit events in terms of what was sustained, not sustained, when you were an officer. So that gives us an idea that people will have to look into their background.
If I could intervene here, I think to Nikki's point from the Council President's office, I think sustained is maybe not the right language, but maybe convicted would be what we're going for.
Sustained is the correct language.
Good afternoon, excellent. Morning still, for the record. Michelle Wirthsberger, Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. We don't have an objection to that language, and it would be sustained because either the process now or the process that is coming, when the determination is made that the individual likely did it, that is a sustained incident. And so that is the correct terminology, sir.
So I think, can we, I think this is something we want to consider for second reader. I think we want to figure out the language with the Law Department to figure out, it seems like sustained is fine from the BPD's perspective. Can it legally be held up, is I guess the question?
I think sustained is a good word. It's used throughout the bill in a couple of places, so I think it would be the appropriate word to use.
I have a related question. To the Deputy Commissioner and to Director Wirthsberger, is it, it was my understanding that there's degrees of misconduct, right? And I don't know if you label them A, B, C, J, H, U, whatever it is, but we're considering this as, again, the if we're going to have former officers on this, if by any chance former officers are nominated on the board, that they could not have certain misconduct, sustained misconduct on their record. And the councilman was talking about specifically those that are against a member of the public and not just the star was on the wrong place in their uniform. But do you have, like, specifically, like, level F is the way, and I don't know if that's, we can use that in, we'll figure it out, but do you know what I'm trying to say? So you have those levels.
Yes, ma'am. So we have serious misconduct and minor misconduct. Serious misconduct is any violation of a policy which gets you five-day suspension or more. Minor misconduct is anything under that. So I would think what he's referring to is exactly what the statute says, any police misconduct involving a member of the public.
Got it, okay.
And then, which is of a serious nature, which means they received a five-day penalty or longer, or you could have it just police misconduct involving any member of the public. The concern I would have about all sustained is we have, there are a lot of people who get sustained for tardiness, you know, lost their property, et cetera, which, you know, doesn't really go against their integrity at all. So I would concur with you that if you use the terminology serious misconduct, which is under our rules, is a five-day suspension or longer, or use the terminology, as the statute says, which is police misconduct involving a member of the public.
Great, thank you. And then to the chairman's question earlier, we... And then, um, to the Chairman's question earlier, we, the three of us were considering initially having some, uh, qualifications for every member and then we thought, no, let's not do that, because we want, um, people who may have been formerly incarcerated, et cetera, if one of the member, one of the council members nominates someone that way. So, that's why we're just keeping it very close to this particular amendment, if you're amenable to that, Mr. Chair.
So, I have a question, Mr. Deputy Commissioner. So, when you talk about these different things that can result in a sustained complaint, so, is that, is that really the appropriate word? Or if we're talking about, um, committing something against the public, what, my interpretation is that if, if they had done something wrong against the public, whether it be assault, whether it be, you know, any of those things, but wouldn't, wouldn't those items, those serious items that we're referencing, because I don't think we're talking about if, you know, if an officer comes in and forgot his name pin on, on his shirt. I mean, we're talking about if they did something to harm the public, don't those items result in, um, some like legal issues or, or potentially convictions of, of the crimes that we're, that we're referencing?
Um, so, uh, could be yes, uh, could be no. So, if they were charged criminally, um, yes, uh, you might want to also, but the ones you're referring to, the criminal ones, um, if they're convicted criminally, most likely they'd be terminated, right? So, under MPTC, there's a terminology called good standing. In order to be a law enforcement officer in this state, you need to have a good standing, uh, you need to be in good standing, which means that you don't have anything serious against you, you weren't terminated, you didn't resign in lieu of termination, um, you didn't leave the agency because you were about to be terminated. So, what I would maybe suggest is you put in the language that no more than two police officers who are currently in good standing, because that way, that would eliminate all the bad, uh...
We're talking about former officers, we're not talking about current.
I can't hear you, ma'am.
We're talking about former, which, which I think that, that's what the Deputy Commissioner talked about also.
You have to be retired in good standing. You can resign, but you still have to be in good standing in NPTC.
Right.
You have to be, if you, if you do not, you can't leave BPD, you can't leave BPD if you're about to be terminated from BPD and go work for Montgomery County. You have to be, you have to be able to be licensed and, and controlled by the MPTC, which is the state regulation. And so, everyone who leaves this agency gets either a good standing letter or they do not get a good standing letter.
Gotcha.
So, um, that's every retired person. So, if you put into the legislation that they must be a member in good standing with MPTC or with BPD, uh, that's a simple database check.
So, is there any scenario where somebody does something harmful to the public, like commits a crime against a member of the public and they can leave on good standing at any point?
So, a serious violation like an assault or a false arrest, I mean, those are termination cases. Anything to do with integrity is a termination case. Is it possible there was a discourtesy, uh, where there was a heated conversation and the officer used inappropriate language and they were, which would be with the public, which, which they didn't get terminated? Yes. Though, I mean, those are learn, those are learning curves that we try to go through to teach people, even though it's a heated moment, don't use, uh, inappropriate language. But the serious violations, the assaults, the false arrests, the thefts, you know, anything criminal, for the most part, those are all termination cases and they'd be not good standing.
So, every, everybody who has left BPD in the past 30 years, they're either in good standing or, or not in good standing.
That is correct.
And, and how is that verified? Do...
So, we have a database system that we, we check. Uh, we just put their name in and it comes up.
So, if we use that language, good standing, you, we, we would be able to have access to confirm whether or not that person was in good standing or not?
That is correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions before we move on to the, are you done with your amendments?
We're not.
You have a follow-up question to that? Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, you, you said that they, just, I just want to clarify, so they had a serious, committed a criminal act, they would be in good standing if they had not been convicted or charged? Like, could you be charged with assault and not be convicted and still be in good standing?
So, if you're charged with assault, so let's say you're charged with assault in a criminal court and you, you're found not guilty, you're then charged administratively with assault, and if you're not convicted, you're not sustained either, because there has to be a proof level that you actually committed the violation. And if, if it wasn't proven in court, which is beyond a reasonable doubt, and then it wasn't proven at an administrative hearing, which is preponderance of the evidence, then under the statute, you are considered not sustained. So, you'd be found not guilty. So, the sustained allegation would no longer be in place. And we could not use the offense if it was never convicted. It'd be like you being charged with burglary, not being convicted, you're not a burglar, you weren't convicted of burglary. There wasn't evidence to prove it. So, yes, sometimes people get charged, they go to the state's attorney's office, they go through a, a trial and they're found not guilty, we then do an administrative charge on them. Uh, but again, the, the proof is lower, so we're more successful than you might be in a criminal court, but if there's not enough evidence to prove that, then you're not sustained, then it's considered not sustained.
Okay. As a follow-up to the...
Can I just ask a clarifying question on that? So, just to clarify, so even if you're not convicted in, um, in court, you can still, there's still a higher threshold for a police officer than there is a general member of the public who committed that same act, because you guys can take that same action.
That is correct.
You can take action against that officer and you guys have done that.
That is correct, and we do do that. It is a lower threshold to, so beyond a reasonable doubt means is more likely than not, right? Preponderance of the evidence is, you tip the scale. It's 51% or it's actually 50.1%.
Gotcha.
That you did something, so it's, it's much easier proof. Uh, so if you, if you're not convicted in a criminal court, most likely you would be convicted in administrative court.
Gotcha, okay. So, that, so there is a higher threshold for a police officer than a member of the public?
It's almost two bites at the apple, right? One's a criminal, one's an administrative. We normally, before this law passed, normally would wait for the criminal court to finish, because if you're convicted in criminal court...
Right.
We only have to go to a trial board and submit the conviction and it's an automatic, virtually an automatic guilt. Under the new statute, it's not going to quite work that way.
Now, you have to do it first because the time, the timeline associated?
The timeframe, correct. Under the old statute, we waited till after the criminal case. Under the new statute, there's no wait time.
Interesting. Wow, okay.
So, just a, one final clarity because...
Can you talk a little closer?
Oh, sorry. Uh, one final clarifying question. So, to your response to the Chair, he asked, anyone that has had a sustained violation, I guess they will never, if you have, if you had a sustained serious violation, you cannot retire in good standing. There are no scenarios where that happens? Or are there scenarios where you can retire with a sustained serious violation?
So, you can retire any, any day of the week that you want to retire, so...
No, 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 I'm saying like, but the, the label of like in good standing. Would you be able to get that if you've had a serious sustained violation?
Right. If you, if you retire and you have a pending case open that has a possibility of termination, just a possibility of termination, of termination, when you retire, you are considered not in good standing, whether or not that case has been adjudicated or not. Now, you have a right to come in and ask for a name clearing hearing, to have a trial board on it to see if you, in fact, would be convicted. We haven't had one in the three years I've been here, but if people leave because there's an open case and they realize what's going to happen, sometimes they do retire, resign and move on, they are not in good standing.
Okay, so, because I didn't think it was clear when you answered it the first time.
No, no, but that was good, that was, that, that did provide the clarity that I think we're seeking, is that you can't, you can't run from it.
You can't run and hide and say, I'm going to leave before you convict me, it doesn't matter, you're not in good standing. And if you're not in good standing, by the way, you can't get a firearms permit, which is like the biggest one. Uh, I mean, there's certain, you can't go work for another law enforcement agency, you can't be sworn in anywhere, like you are restricted.
And soon you won't be able to serve on the PAB, according to the...
And you might not be able to serve on the PAB. And keep in mind, the, the, the PAB as eviction is a, a body to review, meet with chiefs, to review, um, publish, they're not assessing discipline, they're not looking at cases, they're not doing investigations, they are just, they're, they're sort of a body to review, discuss with chiefs, the way to change misconduct in processes. It's not, they're not the reading of the cases, deciding discipline. That's, that's the ACC.
No, I, I understand that, I just think for the integrity of the board, it's important that if the board is supposed to be providing that, that level of oversight and accountability, uh, albeit not in an investigatory capacity, it's important that the people doing, playing in that role do not have sustained violations themselves.
Right.
I think, if that's the compromise that we're going with here.
Yeah, we concur with you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a clarifying question.
Can you come a little closer to the mic?
Sorry, can you hear me now? Is this better?
Yes.
Just a clarifying question on amendments nine and 14, and it may be best for the Law Department to respond, I just wanted to know, when we use the term sentence, if we could just have clarification on if that includes or excludes parole and probation?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last part of that.
On amendment nine and 14?
Yes.
Where we have the language that says, um, the finishing out the servants, the service of their sentence, I just want to be sure, just for my own clarity, does that include or exclude parole and probation?
Okay, um, let me see.
It would include.
And if it does, if we could add language to just clarify that, so that way...
I think the language is ambiguous and, and we should probably make that clear.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And what's your second question?
My next question is, I know we struck the requirements for membership for, uh, serving on the PAB, but we still have those same requirements for the ACC, and I wasn't sure if that was something that statutorily required or...
Um, yes, it, we decided to keep that in for the ACC, because this is a body that's going to be the directly overseeing cases. And so, um, with, with these cases, it, it takes, um, I think it's important to have that level of experience in those decisions. I think for the PAB, um, the PAB will be filling that body, um, but I, I think it kind of starts there. So, yes, it's going to stay on for the ACC is what we're proposing, but we took it out for the PAB.
Are any of our other jurisdictions doing the same requirements?
I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions before we move on to public testimony? Okay, um, I'll go in order that I see you here. I'll just call your name, if you want to come up and speak, just step up to the mic, introduce yourself and, uh, say whatever it is you'd like to say.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Lydia Walter Rodriguez and I'm the Region Director with CASA here in Baltimore, co-convenor of the Campaign for Justice, Safety and Jobs and part of the statewide Steering Committee for the State Maryland Coalition for Justice and Police Accountability. To date, the Baltimore-based CGSJ Community Coalition includes dozens of powerful organizations representing thousands of Marylanders from Baltimore fighting to, fighting for police accountability and reform. As you know, CGSJ and MCJPA sent a joint letter to the City Council outlining several suggested amendments. In addition, the Council has heard dozens of community testimonies in the first two hearings uplifting the urgency of incorporating these very, um, community amendments. We are glad to hear that almost all of the suggested amendments were incorporated for the Council to vote on, and we urge the Council to vote in favor of the amendments incorporated. Yet, there were two suggested amendments we did not see outlined that we urge inclusion to the bill. They include adding the provision for the PAB to have independent, or excuse me, adding the provision for the PAB to have independent counsel in addition to striking down ACC language in the PAB bill, which is duplicative. Finally, we asked the, we asked at the option of two former officers on the PAB be struck down. I want to again uplift the coalition and community ask to ensure no former police officers or family members of officers have a seat on the PAB, as this will be a conflict of interest to a true community oversight body. We are counting on the City Council to prevent the weakening of police oversight and accountability. Please incorporate the full suggested community amendments by CGSJ and MCJPA to the PAB bill, which address all of the community concerns.
Um, next up, David Kramer.
Honorable Chair Schifer and Bill Sponsor Conway and other members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to present testimonial modifying Bill 220234 concerning the Police Oversight Board. My name is David Kramer, I live in the 4th District and represent Serge Baltimore, showing up for racial justice. We are affiliated with National Serge and have 3,500 contacts, which we regularly communicate with and call on to support priorities developed by organizations that we refer to as our accountability partners, who are led and controlled by leaders of color. We have active teams of constituents in every city legislative district and several councilmatic districts. We are a multiracial group with the primary purpose of mobilizing white folks to dismantle white supremacy and institutional racism. We are members of and support the Campaign for Justice, Safety and Jobs. I would just like to highlight one of the amendments that has been recently referred to concerning the extra qualifications for the ACC. The state, uh, let, the language is actually unnecessary and we found it particularly egregious and unnecessary by adding those, the language that was just recently referred to. It, it, it is, uh, the language is managing or evaluating the management of a law enforcement agency, evaluating citizen complaints against a, a police officer, or impersonal disciplinary procedures as a manager, employee, representative, mediator or arbitrator. It appears that this language is meant to, I think, uh, highlight the seriousness of the members of the ACC, which will actually be, uh, deliberating on the testimony and, uh, imposing discipline on officers. But I would like to note as part of the, uh, legislation, the next section referring to training, it makes reference to training requirements for ACC members and mentions that the training will need to be approved by the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission. If this is the same training that the current Baltimore Police Department Trial Board for its citizen members, then it will be a thorough training to ensure a fair outcome for both the, the public as well as the officer. I know this because I have been certified to serve on the Baltimore Police Department Trial Board two years ago after taking this training. It consists of 40 hours of classroom training and a minimum of 20 hours of ride-alongs on all three shifts and in various districts. Because this curriculum has already been approved and tested, I suspect it will become the standard statewide, not only for the mandated trial boards, but also for ACC members as well. Since it took several years to design and approve this curriculum by the Maryland Training Commission, and it has been tested by the Baltimore Police Department already, uh, and it isn't, so it, it, and it takes several years for that, all that to happen, uh, for the training to be developed, I suspect, and we were told when we were trained, that this would probably become the standard statewide, so I suspect it will be applied also in this case as well, uh, because it already exists. With that kind of training, I can attest that as a trial board member, it provided the means, I think, to not only give us the means to adequately judge, uh, different situations, uh, but also provide some objectivity about it. And I think, uh, it will clearly serve the purpose, I think, that the extra language was intended. So, as a result of this, uh, we feel that it should be stricken, it's unnecessary, because the training, uh, that will be provided will most likely take the place of that and provide the professionalism that I think you're looking for in that training. So, we, uh, strongly recommend that that language be stricken. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, and the name is not written clearly, but, uh, I think it says To- Toby?
Toby Dietz.
Toby Dietz? Okay, thank you.
Sorry for my bad handwriting, thank you for the opportunity. I am Toby Dietz and I represent Jews United for Justice, which organizes over 1,600 Baltimoreans. I've also lived in Bolton Hill for almost four decades and... and after the murder of Freddie Gray, I began working with Black neighborhood leaders in West Baltimore, and then with citywide groups who've been pushing for a strong, independent community oversight since well before the creation of our Civilian Review Board in 1999. And now, because of the unprecedented state reforms we got in 2021, we're all here, you and us here. We have a historic opportunity to do what reformers have been calling for all along. I do support many of the changes you are proposing to the original bill, including all of those which have expanded the potential civilian membership of the PAB. And I agree with my predecessor that we don't need those added restrictive requirements for the ACC, given the stringent membership requirement, which is, by the way, a statewide requirement. So we do want to include all ordinary Baltimoreans who have the life experience to serve well while avoiding conflicts of interest. But at least one further amendment is essential to the Board's integrity and effectiveness. The PAB must have independent legal counsel. The Board cannot get legal advice from the same lawyers who represent the Police Department. This creates a fundamental conflict of interest. And testimony throughout these hearings by the ACLU, CGSJ, and others shows this, it actually has been a real-world problem in Baltimore City, not just a theoretical one. And I believe that Montgomery County and Prince George's County, we'll have to check, have already adopted an independent legal counsel provision. I know our charter is a complication, but we need to find a way to do the same. So let's make the most of this historic opportunity we've got now. A strong, independent Board is an essential pillar of public safety and rebuilding public trust. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Next up, Marilyn Carsoles? Okay, thank you. I see Nina Thimble is here, but I assume you didn't want to testify? Would you like to? Sure? Okay. Last up, Davon Love?
All right. Good morning, Chair Committee. I just want to talk, just some specific details about the bill and just offer, some of which has already been said, some suggested changes. So I just first want to make clear that the legislative intent behind the establishment of the Police Accountability Board is to serve as the community's window into the internal disciplinary process. I say that because the rationale behind the position that, you know, LBS, you know, MCGPA, CGSJ, the organizations that put together the letter of proposed amendments, the rationale of not having former law enforcement has to do with the fact that law enforcement is represented in other aspects of the disciplinary process. So whether it's the trial board, whether it's the appointments the mayor is able to make on the charge committee, law enforcement has ample opportunity. And then if you look at just the full-out disciplinary process, law enforcement is well-represented and taken care of. So again, I just wanted to state the legislative intent behind that. Additionally, and as I mentioned to this bill sponsor, Councilman Conway privately, and I'll discuss publicly, and I may have mentioned it the last time I testified on this, is that the Fraternal Order of Police, on their website, there's a podcast where a gentleman who is the first vice president of the statewide FOP admits that they feel that they could impact and manipulate the composition of the Police Accountability Boards across the state. And if you look at what has been happening in other jurisdictions, it's the membership of the Police Accountability Boards that's been under some of the greatest contestation, because the Police Accountability Board, being that window into the disciplinary process, has tremendous power, you know, based on the composition of the Police Accountability Board. And so, you know, our coalition prefers that no former law enforcement is qualified, is able to serve on the Police Accountability Board. I think the cap is a good backstop. So if for some reason this council doesn't see fit to make that exclusion, then I think the cap helps to push back against the potential of the FOP to organize, to get membership, to flood the membership of the Police Accountability Boards, which again, they've admitted that they will attempt to do. And I would hope that that particular portion in the document that was sent out, it's seven A and seven B, I would hope that you all would vote on both. We'd like to see on the record who will support a full prohibition versus those who would support the cap instead. Additionally, I want to reference something the sponsor of the bill mentioned around the charge committee, the qualifications of those who are serving on the charge committee. Referring back to, one of the previous speakers mentioned the training that is going to be required, whether you serve on the Police Accountability Board, whether you serve on the trial board. The Maryland Police Training Standards Commission will provide, should provide training for those that serve on that. The qualifications of the charge committee, again, if we think about the legislative intent of the PAB, if you're chair of the Police Accountability Board, by statute, you have an opportunity, you serve, or your destiny serves, on the charge committee. I would imagine that many of folks who are on the Police Accountability Board would not have experience managing a law enforcement agency, would not have experience, the formal process of reviewing complaints. And so that would act, that goes against, really, the intent of what the PAB is supposed to do. So I agree that the folks that serve in that capacity should be trained. But I think those requirements of those on the charge committee, again, exclude the members from which we intend on serving on the Police Accountability Board. So we really urge that that language, even though it's removed from the PAB language, we urge that it's struck from the charge committee. And again, keep there the training that is necessary for folks to serve in that capacity. And then also, I want to comment on the suggested amendment, I think it was Councilman Torrance, around sustained complaints. Now, what I'm about to describe, the challenges there, I don't have a solution for, but I just wanted you all to be aware. So one of the challenges that has, that has been an issue with law enforcement and its internal investigatory process is that, if you imagine, you know, law enforcement in terms of accountability has been very insulated from external oversight. And Mr., I forget his first name, but Mr. Perez, who testified in Annapolis on what ultimately became Anton's Law, described how leadership within the Police Department, if they showed favoritism to certain law enforcement officers, would direct Internal Affairs who to investigate, you know, and try to guide the investigation such, to show favoritism to the ones that leadership favored. And so one of the challenges is that if the language is added that an officer in good standing that doesn't have any sustained charges on their record may not be representative of those that actually engage in misconduct, because of how that process, particularly before the passage of Anton's Law, can be manipulated, and the fact that those records were barred from disclosure to the public, there was no pressure to ensure that sustained charges. And if you read the consent decree report, the DOJ report from 2016, it actually gives examples of very egregious acts. One of the things that I cite very often when I talk about the 2016 DOJ report is an incident where an officer, on several occasions, stripped searched a person that was just out on the street, and that the complaint, and the person made complaints. And the complaint that they made against this officer were unsustained. Right? So there will be a lot of examples of complaints that are unsustained that probably should have been, but were not, because before 2021, these records would not have been disclosable to the public. Therefore, there would be no one to check on the credibility of the sustained and unsustained. So I just wanted to raise that as a limitation of that amendment. Again, I'll have a solution to that, but just wanted to raise that as a limitation. And I think, challenge sustained complaint? Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who did not sign up that wishes to speak? Please come up to the mic and introduce yourself. I want to make sure that anybody who comes to speak has an opportunity to do so. One thing I also want to note, for those of you that attend hearings of the City Council over, you know, any period of time, I've been on the council six years. Normally, there is a two-minute, a two-minute limit to testimony. I hope that everybody can see that when it's come to this topic, I have not limited anybody. I welcome everybody to speak for as long as they see fit, so that the council gets everybody's feedback. I don't recall ever limiting anybody's time in any committee I've ever chaired. And that is because if you took the time to be here, we want to hear from you. And so I just wanted to point that out, and that's why also I'm extending the mic to anybody who has not signed up. Normally, we go off this list. But again, I'm happy to hear from anybody who's here today. So please introduce yourself and introduce someone.
Greetings. My name is Samantha Master, and I'm a member of Organizing Black. I am also a resident of the Fourth District for about two years, and my family has resided in Baltimore City for about, for a little over 100 years. So very deep ties and deep care about the city. Organizing Black is a collective of Black 18- to 35-year-olds who are practitioners in a world that does not yet exist. And right now, a world, and honestly, a city, where police are fully held accountable for the harassment, maiming, evidence planting, and other impactful forms of harm, abuse, corruption, does not exist. But I'm really heartened and believe it can with the establishment of the PAB. But I end through the amendments proposed by the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs. I just have a few comments for you all. I want to say that I really appreciate the striking of any exclusion for formerly incarcerated people and people with felony convictions to be able to serve in the PAB. People with felony convictions should be able to fully serve with no time limit after, with, after their conviction, because not allowing them to do so really reinforces a second-class citizenship for our returning citizens and our returning community members. And so I see that that had been stricken from the most recent form of the bill, and deeply appreciate that. I wholeheartedly support the exclusion of law enforcement as well, current or former law enforcement, as well as their families from the PAB for many of the reasons stated, but certainly because we want to ensure full accountability from a body that is there to maintain the integrity of the process. And so I want to affirm what has already been said, that former and current police officers might jeopardize the integrity of the process. However, if they are allowed, I believe that they should have a pristine, so no, no record of any sort of misconduct. And then, again, want to affirm the requirements for management are onerous for people, for community members who have a right to be a part of the accountability process, but may not have managerial experience. And so there should be training. However, the requirement for management experience is really onerous. And so I would ask that you all incorporate these amendments so that we can have a body that can fully use this opportunity to bring a new light and a new sense of, not just accountability, but integrity to the police accountability process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? If you can introduce yourself.
Buenos dias. Soy Lily Cordova, mother residente de Baltimore y miembro de CASA.
Good morning. My name is Lily Cordova. I'm a mother, Baltimore City resident, and a member of CASA.
CASA es la organización de servicios directos y defensa de los inmigrantes. Liderada por miembros más grandes en el estado de Maryland, en la región del Atlántico medio, con miles de miembros latinos y afrodescendientes que trabajan aquí en la ciudad de Baltimore. Estoy aquí hoy elevando las voces de tantos de vuestros miembros de la ciudad de Baltimore que tienen que ser representados por.
CASA is the largest member-led immigrant advocacy and direct service organization in the state of Maryland in the mid-Atlantic, with thousands of Black and Brown members working here in Baltimore. I'm here today raising the voices of so many of our Baltimore City members who need to be represented by the PAB.
Los criterios de membresía deben ser basados en la capacidad para hacer el trabajo sin prejuicios. Entonces tenemos que prohibir las policías actuales o retirados en la junta.
Membership criteria should be based on ability to perform the job objectively. This means restricting current or retired police from serving on the Board.
Trabajando en Baltimore he escuchado muchas historias de mala conducta policial, muchas en las cuales incluyen a miembros de la comunidad de inmigrantes quienes son menos probables a presentar denuncias formales contra la policía debido a la intimidación y la falta de acceso de servicios lingüísticos. Por esta razón nosotros como miembros de la coalización comunitaria luchamos por una verdadera inclusión y representación.
Working in Baltimore, I've heard countless stories of police misconduct, many of which include members of the immigrant community.
Can you come to the mic when you're?
Working in Baltimore, I've heard countless stories of police misconduct, many of which include members of the immigrant community who are less likely to file formal complaints against the police due to intimidation and lack of access to language services. For this reason, we as members of the Community Coalition fight for true inclusivity and representation.
Instamos al consejo municipal que incorpore todas las recomendaciones a la coalización comunitaria en el proyecto de ley que continúe mejorando la comunicación y transparencia de la comunidad.
We urge the City Council to incorporate all of the Community Coalition's recommendations into the bill and to continue to improve communication and transparency within the community.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Now, I'll turn it over to Councilman Conway to introduce his amendments, and we'll be voting on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of pieces that were brought up in testimony to clarify. So one of the things that was brought up was the question about independent legal counsel. This is something that we worked really hard at. And if you remember, in the last hearing we had, there was a problem with the charter. So by charter, only the city solicitor can represent city boards, entities, and otherwise. And so we, in the short term, can consider and have already worked with the administration, the mayor's office, and MOU that we're going to do with the Board to address that concern, realizing that it's incredibly important that this Board have the ability to have independent legal counsel. I do think, though, that we are already considering, I was working with the council president's office on this, figuring out a way, either through charter amendment or through state legislation, to address that. So I think this is something we prefer to address through state legislation. And so I think we want to bring it to the city's group in Annapolis. But I think that would be the most, the best way to address it. I think if we have to get to a charter amendment, we can discuss that. But there are already considerations for that. Just to let you know that we hear you, and we're trying to figure out how to untangle that, given the time limitations. With regard to duplicative language around the ACC, so this was another issue that we sort of wrestled back and forth with, both with the Law Department and DLR, in understanding what the state bill actually does. And what the state bill actually does is it requires that we establish a process for the ACC. And so we have to have some language establishing that process. Without putting that language in the bill, there is no city ordinance explaining how we fill the ACC. It just says at the state level that we need to create one. So we decided to leave the language in there because we had to fulfill that need. The state bill requires that we create one and says the confines under which we can do so, but it does not create one for us. We have to do that in this bill, so we decided to leave that in there. We touched on the questions about former police officers, and I think we had a pretty robust discussion. And I'm eager to consider the proposed amendment by Councilman Torrance. And so we'll work out the language for that for second reader. And I think that covers it all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may. We did discuss the second reader amendment as well for the confidentiality.
Okay.
So I just wanted to put that on the record, that we will supply that to you.
That's right. So this is a conversation that we had, actually, just before this meeting with regard to a, there will be, I think, maybe two components that will be, oh, two. This, the, the, the. there will be, I think, maybe two components that will be, oh, two, the discussed amendment with Councilman Torrance will be drafted in for second reader, but there are two additional amendments. One noted by the law department with regard to confidentiality and making sure that we are consistent with all laws that this board must stick to, and so that'll be amended in second reader. And then there was an additional consideration from the police department.
I think it had to do with the timing with respect to when they had to deliver complaints.
That's right. This is with regard to the timing for sharing the complaints, and you can go ahead and explain.
Yes, sir. So in the bill as written, the police department is required to hand over to the PAB upon receipt any claims of misconduct involving the public. We have talked to civil rights and what we, because it could be burdensome to do it immediately, so what we've agreed to is every two weeks, sending a report of every single misconduct claim that involves a member of the public.
Excellent. And so we'll get that drafted for our second reader as well, so we'll have three additional amendments to be considered after this. So with that, the way we're going to do this is I'm going to put forward the package excluding 7A and 7B for consideration. So I want to move the package excluding amendments 7A and 7B.
Do I have a second? What kind of question before it's second? So is the?
Can't hear you. Yes.
So just to clarify, so the rationale for not including those is to make adjustments for second reader?
No, we're going to vote on that today.
Hold on. So what we're going to do is, so all these like technical amendments, all the things that Chairman Conway went through, we're going to vote on now. We're not, we're going to then go to the seventh amendments, the ones involving having police office, former police officers on the board. The other items that you guys mentioned, that and a couple, and there was one other item that needs to be drafted, that we will entertain on second reader. But this is to have an updated. Okay. So 7A and 7B we voted on separately today? Correct. We're not, we're correct. So we're going to do this now, we'll have an updated version of the bill, and then we will entertain on second reader the amendment, the two amendments that need to be discussed, and then that will go before the council.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The cleanest probably a motion to divide the question, just by moving question seven, and then we vote on the package, and then somebody can move either 7A or 7B.
Sure. Okay, so.
We have a motion to divide the question.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to divide, to divide the amendments up, to vote on everything except for 7A and 7B. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the motion carries, and there's a motion on the floor from Councilman Conway to move all of those amendments except for the 7A and B. Do we have a second on those amendments?
I want to, I want to mention to the chair just one more.
Can you come to the mic?
Just for the public at home to say, can we just state what 7A and 7B are?
Yeah, 7A and 7B, like I just mentioned, is whether or not former police officers can serve on the board.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
The public knows what we were discussing.
Sure. So do we have a second on all the amendments except for 7A and 7B? Seconded by Vice President Middleton. Let's just do a roll call vote on that.
Okay. Bottom one.
Let's start with Conway.
The motion on all amendments except 7A and 7B. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Hold on one second. He just walked. I can move.
Aye. Mr. Costello votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Chairman Schleifer?
Yes.
Chairman Schleifer votes aye. Chair votes seven oh, the motion carries.
Thank you. I want to move 7B favorably.
Do we have a second? 7B, just to clarify, is what Councilman Conway had stated, that no more than two former police officers or employees of law enforcement agencies may serve on the board at one time. So there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? I'll second it. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance?
Nay.
Mr. Torrance votes no.
Aye.
Member Ramos?
No.
Member Ramos votes no. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Mr. Costello voted aye. Mr. Burnett?
No.
Mr. Burnett votes no. Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Chair, four votes and a affirmative, no negatives, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to move the bill favorable as amended?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Moved by Conway, seconded by Middleton. Yeah.
Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Chair, seven votes and a affirmative, no negatives, go to second reader at the next regular meeting.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for everyone who joined us. I want to give a special thank you to Councilman Conway for this heavy lift. This is not a simple bill. It has required a tremendous amount of efforts with him talking with the law department, the police department, community, community residents, advocates, and the mayor's office and council president's office, and really just everybody. And so I want to thank Councilman Conway for sticking through it and working with us to get this done in the timeline that we needed to do. It was sort of a rush based on state law and when we needed to complete this by, and so thank you for that. And now I'll turn it over to Councilman Conway for final remarks before we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, you know, once again, I want to thank all the folks that provided insight and I hope that's celebratory. I just want to, you know, thank everybody that's provided insight. We still have a little more work to do on the bill, and I was just talking with Councilman Torrance, and so we'll get some of that done on second reader. But, you know, really appreciate my colleagues and the open conversations, the ability to be flexible and straightforward in what we're trying to accomplish here. I think this is incredibly important toward, I think, the conversation we have all been having with regard to the credibility and the relationship of our police department with everyday residents. And so, you know, I know how important this is for us to get this right, and I appreciate everybody coming to the table, especially the advocates all the way through, and discussions and working with us to resolve this. We do have more work to do on this bill, and I suspect another bill, but I think, you know, it's good to be here. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are now adjourned.